The city council, uh, city of Lathrop Village. City clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Yes ma'am, Madam Mayor, roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cantor.
Present.
Councilmember Brock. Councilmember Ferguson.
Present.
And Councilmember Stallings. Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, I invite everyone to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Mayor, can we excuse, uh, Councilman Brock and Councilwoman Stallings?
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? They are considered excused. So now I have the approval of the agenda. Any changes or additions?
We need to make the...
Just an addition of, uh, number nine.
Right.
Make it A, uh, nine A for CIP.
Just put down there, this was none, so they'll just be. Now we have a public hearing. Yeah, okay. Any other? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any discussion? Hearing none?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Agenda has been approved. Okay, for the consent agenda. Do we need to make any changes to that, or you want to pull anything out?
No.
Mayor and council, if I could just ask, um, that you make one correction in the minutes for the May 21st council meeting. And that was relative to the, um, budget resolution, the amount that was indicated for the DDA, should actually read 163,189. The amount that was, um, in the document was 162,789.
And that's in the meeting minutes, not the study session?
Correct.
Anything else?
Nope.
Have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So move second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That is approved. Now we'll consider approval of the dispersment reports. First one will be the periods covering May 1st, 2018 to May 15th, 2018, and the amount of $53,115.97.
Make a motion to approve for that period for $53,115.97?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? One once, one twice? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The first dispersment report is approved. Second one is going to be for the period covering May 16th, 2018 to May 31st, 2018, in the amount of $371,507.45.
Move to approve for the stated period for $371,507.45.
Second.
Moved in second, anyone have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Dispersment reports are approved. Next, we will have the acceptance of the department reports.
Make a motion to, uh, to accept the department reports?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on the department reports? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That has been accepted. We're running through this, aren't we? It's still early though, Ian still has some time. Uh, we have come to the point, um, where it's public comment. Any items that are not on the agenda, you can come up to the mic and, uh, say what you need to say and give your address. But first, we have our state representative, Jeremy Moss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Counsel, attorney, clerk, and I'm very excited to welcome back my friend to Metro Detroit, a very good hire of the new city administrator, Cheryl Mitchell. I just wanted to give kind of a brief update of some of the things I've been working on in Lansing and entertain any questions that you might have about what we've been doing up there. Probably the last few weeks, the biggest thing we've been working on has been the budget, uh, which we approved. The good news for communities across the state, including Lathrop Village, is that there's no cuts to revenue sharing. So everything that you anticipated, uh, in the budget, it remained whole. Bad news is, is that we still have money in a rainy day fund that could go to road funding. And the majority, uh, just has not allocated those dollars. We had a vote earlier this spring, um, to allocate 175 million additional dollars to communities all throughout the state, um, which is pennies, uh, when it comes to local road funding, as it comes down to our local communities. Democrats offered an amendment to boost that by another $75 million, uh, which was there. The money was there, and it was shot down. So I voted against the budget for several reasons, but namely because, you know, we can be doing a lot more to prioritize road funding. Um, and that's something I hear about constantly from the community members here in Lathrop Village and the rest of the district. So I, you know, it was a symbolic vote against, but to be honest with you, it wasn't the worst budget that we've seen. Not drastic cuts, and no cuts to revenue sharing in this budget. Two kind of bucket areas, I guess, where I kind of put the different bills that I've been working on, that I want to talk about, uh, very briefly, are, uh, I've been working on a lot of election reforms, and a lot of consumer protection reforms. I think those are really big ticket items that residents in Lathrop Village depend on me to continue to fight for. If you don't have fair elections, you don't have a government that works. And so we've been really trying to tackle some of the problems, uh, as I've seen them, uh, in election administration. And then once we have a representative government that works, we should be fighting to protect the consumer, uh, in the district. So, one bill I introduced, uh, recently was House Bill 5534, which would actually promptly require the governor to fill vacancies if there's a special election. We have two vacancies around the state of Michigan. Uh, the 13th congressional district is vacant. And then the state rep from Lansing got elected mayor of Lansing, and then that seat is vacant. And the governor could have called special elections that could have filled those seats by now. Neither of those seats will be filled until November. And that's a disservice to the residents in those communities. So we introduced bills to require the governor to adhere to a strict timeline to expedite the filling of those seats. If there's a vacancy in Lathrop Village, um, either state rep, state senator, whatever, uh, the, the community members depend on their voices being heard through their elected representative. And if a governor just delays and prolongs, um, you know, there are important decisions that are being made without people in those communities having representation. So we introduced that bill, uh, was referred to the elections committee. And then another series of bills that I worked on with colleagues, were House Bills 5208 through 5214, which would reform how we, uh, circulate petitions here in Michigan. Petition circulators can and do lie to you. A lot of those petition circulators operate, uh, with a monetary incentive of, they get paid per signature, per petition sheet. And so there's this monetary incentive to get more and more and more signatures. Um, and so we have looked at best practices around the country and have actually instituted a series of several bills that would reform how we do petition circulation. Number one, we would punish deceitful petition circulators, um, from, from making false claims, knowingly making false claims to get you to sign a petition. And then we would ban the practice of having gathering signatures, uh, per, per money, uh, per petition. Um, you could still be a paid circulator, uh, but you wouldn't be paid per signature. So there wouldn't be this monetary incentive to deceive the public. It got a lot of attention because we've seen petitions circulated all around our area, and people are misrepresenting what's on the petition circulation, um, on the petition sheet. So those are bills that I felt were important into a healthy democracy. It has to be based on, on a trust between somebody who's telling you what's on the petition and you as the voter signing the petition. So we're trying to kind of, uh, you know, uphold that trust in government. And then lastly, in the election side, uh, we've introduced legislation myself, Representative Sherry Gaydanyogo, Representative Darren Camilleri, Representative Kristy Pagan, Representative Robert Winberg, uh, and I have worked on a package of bills that would increase access to voting. That includes allowing electronic voter, uh, uh, registration, which other states, 32 other states have done. That would, uh, provide for automatic voter registration, which other states have done when you renew your driver's license or personal ID. Um, and then, uh, my bill in particular would allow first-time voters the right to cast an absentee ballot. We've banned first-time voters the right to cast an absentee ballot. When I was 18 years old and a student at Michigan State University, I, you know, I wanted to vote in Southfield. That's where my community was. So I better believe I drove home from Michigan State University, uh, to come home and to vote, and then drive back up to school that day. And it's a disenfranchisement of first-time voters that were, to require them, uh, to be in person rather than vote absentee, uh, if they will be out of the community. So those bills, uh, were sent to elections committee. I serve on the elections committee, and I'm pushing the chairman to take up these, these reforms, because I think they're very important. And then lastly, uh, we've instituted a series of bills that would protect the consumer here in Lathrop Village and throughout the district. Uh, the first is a package of bills that we've been working on for a while, that would introduce insurance consumer protections. I hear every day from every corner of this district about auto insurance, and why it's so expensive here in Michigan. And there's this bad practice, um, that some insurance, uh, agencies, uh, put forward called price optimization. And what it basically says is, if I'm a, uh, a, an, a not savvy shopper, if I don't, if I don't threaten to leave my, my insurance, uh, uh, plan and, and look for something else, if I don't have the time to do that, I'm not seeing the same rewards and discounts and offers as somebody who might pick up and leave, or say, you know, "I'm, I'm looking elsewhere." "Oh, well, sorry, sir, you know, we actually have another, another offer for you." Insurance should be based on your driving record. It shouldn't be based on whether you have the time to be a, a, a savvy consumer. And in this hectic world, there aren't a lot of savvy consumers out there. So other states across the country have banned this practice of price optimization, which basically allows an insurance agency to, uh, offer rewards and discounts based on things that are other than your driving record. So we've, we, we, myself, Representative Donna Lasinski, Representative Sherry Gaydanyogo, and Representative Tom Cochran introduced a whole series of reforms to make sure that we all see the same low rates, same rewards, same offers, same promotions, same discounts, taking the lead of other states who have done this. And then the very last bill that we've been working on actually kind of emanated from our district. Uh, a year ago, over a year ago, when we had that historic windstorm, uh, that a million people in the state lost power, we got calls from our office, from hotels, or from residents who were experiencing hotels and motels price gouging, um, during that period of emergency. In fact, there was one motel in Southfield that has a big let-up sign every other day of the week that says, "Rates $59 a night." And we heard from folks that were being charged $400 a night during the period in which they were seeking emergency shelter, um, you know, from, from a power outage that have impacted a million people throughout the state. So Jason, who is my legislative director, who, you know, does a fantastic job, immediately dove in, uh, to what we can do to protect the consumers here in Lathrop Village who might have been displaced, uh, during that, uh, state of emergency. And about 30 other states, in their price gouging laws, directly state, "During the period of a state of emergency, you cannot, uh, increase your price beyond a certain percentage." And that would be declared by a governor or a president. A state of emergency would be a weather event, would be an act of war, would be a terrorism threat. Michigan's price gouging law is very, very, very weak. It's, it's broad, it deals in general terms, do not price gouge, but it doesn't set those specific parameters that about 30 other states, um, you know, have put forward. And a lot of these states, even conservative attorneys general, have said, "This protects the consumer." So, you know, we, we've, we dived into this, um, and we've, uh, put forward two bills, 5714 and 5715, um, that would prohibit businesses from increasing the price of essential goods or services, including lodging, which is the hotel issue, from exceeding their highest price in the 180-day period preceding the declaration of a state of emergency. So that was the balance that we struck. So if there's a state of emergency declared today, then a business could not increase their price of their goods or services beyond what was the highest price in the last 180 days, and that would last for 30 days moving forward. There are some exceptions, if, if, if there's a certain good or service that is low in, um, high in demand and low in, in, in being stocked on the shelf, we would, we would, we would have reasonable exceptions. This is something I've really been working on. I mean, we, we, we've, we, we should not have people, uh, conducting business in our district in this state that profit off of human misery. And so we've met with the committee chairman of the Commerce Committee where it was referred. We've walked him through all of this. We're doing everything we can to get these bills a hearing. I think this should be a nonpartisan, noncontroversial issue that protects consumers in every part of Michigan. So that's, those are some of the things I've been working on. Just wanted to give kind of a brief update, maybe not so brief. But, uh, I just wanted to say, um, it's a continuing pleasure to represent Lathrop Village. This is just such a happy community. Not a lot, not a lot of controversy. So I thank the, I thank the residents of Lathrop Village for, uh, for being a peaceful bunch. And, um, but if they should ever need me, if you should ever need me, don't hesitate to reach out. We're always accessible, always available. You can reach me at my state website, which is moss.houstems.com. You can reach me at my office line, which is 517-373-1788. We are always on call, um, and we are at your service. So I just want to appreciate the invitation to speak tonight, and I'll entertain any questions that council members might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What, uh, what chances do the...
I went this way first.
Oh, sorry. Didn't hear anybody talking. All stuff?
Sorry, go ahead. No, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
What, what chances do the, the election reforms have, given the controlling party? I can't imagine that they would be at all interested in any of those.
You know, it's been interesting. We, you know, the, the, the majority party doesn't want to shake up the status quo, and, um, instead of increasing voter access, has been doing a lot to decrease voter access and to make it harder for people to vote. Right before we broke for our, our, our summer recess, they introduced a series of bills that would require strict voter ID laws, which is just an attempt to make sure that we are preventing people from exercising their constitutional guaranteed right to participate in our elective democracy. So, we are unfortunately on some of these going in the opposite direction. However, I think that there is probably an appetite, hopefully, for the petition reforms. We have instituted, uh, a, a few bills in just the last several weeks that dealt with penalizing people who commit election forgery. So, um, uh, actually signing documents falsely, as it comes to election law. So I think that if somebody is circulating a petition, it's not necessarily strictly forgery, but it's still deceit. And so we are, we're, we're, we're going on that route a little bit, and so I think those bills probably have more legs to it than our voter access bills, unfortunately.
Interesting.
Yeah. And you know, every day in Lansing is just, uh, more interesting than the one that preceded it.
I'm sure. I'm sure. Anyone else have any questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you. I have to jet. I got a Southfield homeowners association to address, but I really appreciate the invitation, and we will continue to give regular updates here.
Okay.
To Lathrop Village.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else that has any public comments? Any of the two?
I do.
Oh, okay.
27440, Lathrop Boulevard. I'm sorry, I have a couple things tonight. Communication for the community. I came to the Democratic, um, people...
Candidate forum?
Yes, candidates, thank you. But I only found out about it through a neighbor, a half hour before it started. And I looked on the website afterwards to see if it was there, um, or to see if I had missed something. And, um, my neighbor had found out about it from Facebook. I will take 100% responsibility that I am not a Facebooker, and I do not see becoming a Facebooker anytime in the near future. But I think that there should be other ways that we can communicate what's going on, because I could only stay for an hour, because I had a meeting after, um, that I had to be at by 7:30. Actually, I was late to that too, because it was so good. And I really wanted to stay, and I would have been able to had I known earlier. And I'm sure there are other things going on in the city that are being missed. We used to have, um, a, we signed up for it here for an email blast or a text blast, or, and some people had both, about things that were going on in the community. And I don't know what has happened to that, but I, I don't know if I'm just being missed or if it's just not occurring at all anymore. So I, I was just wondering if there was somebody responsible for that or could be responsible, so that we can get some, some more information going out to people.
Most of the stuff that's, um, that we communicate is city of Lathrop Village sanctioned things. That was not. That was a, that was a separate organization.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, we could start doing that when something's here, or that the public can go to. But that's up to you.
Well, next, this, this coming weekend is Summer in the Village, right?
No.
When is Summer in the Village?
Well, it's gonna be Autumn in the Village.
Oh, okay.
It's gonna be September.
We had, we'd meet and eat on Saturday because we thought it was coming up.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I...
Sorry.
I still, no, that's okay. So you're saying that there are plenty of places that I can find things that are going on in Lathrop?
No, that's not what I'm, no, 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 that's not what I'm saying. The one thing that we've, what we're trying to handle first is all Lathrop Village business to be blasted. Uh, the things that we are actually putting on. I don't even know if we really put anything else on the website if it's not Lathrop Village sanctioned.
We haven't. Not typically, I mean, again, that, that'll open you kind of, sorry.
Open the, yeah.
But that might open yourself up if you're advertising for one group. Their event, uh, you may be advertising for every group that wants to have an event in and around the Lathrop area. So I would be cautious about doing that. Certainly, um, we could put all of the Lathrop events on, um, on the website.
On the website.
And that should be, that email blast system. I don't know if that is still functional. Yeah, I was, I was gonna mention, it, it, you, you, we should check into that because the blast, it works and it works well. I get, I think I had like three, I think last week I got three, um, announcements. I think I got one today, actually.
Yes, if you sign up on the website to the various pages, when they are updated, it will be sent to you by text or email.
Or both, if you want.
From the website?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a new, that's a new system. The one you're referencing was some time ago, and I don't know that that one is still active.
So we all have to re-up, is what you're saying? Okay, so we have to get the word out that we have to re-up in order to, for this to occur, right?
Maybe we can put that in my town.
Well, that would not be until, um, later on, but we can put that on the website. You need to sign up for the website.
You need to look on the website to re-up.
But also maybe we have the advertisement on, um, CMN TV also about re-upping.
In our town, the next one.
Yeah.
And then my next thing is about Veterans Grove. Does anyone know who is supposed to take responsibility for that? For, for weeding between the bricks and for planting and weeding the little garden itself? Because a few years ago, I was told that the Lathrop Village Community Foundation was supposed to take, take care of that. But when I was up here at the children's garden last week, um, Mary Hilton was in Veterans Grove, and she was quite upset. Her son is, uh, one of the names that are engraved, um, on the memorial. And, um, and, and really, it was a weedy disgrace. And, um, it's just, I, I feel it's, it's disrespectful to our military men and women and their families, and really to our community, because that's really not what our community is at all. And so I just don't, I don't know, I'm absolutely willing to help, but I'd like to know who is responsible for that. I'm, I'm assuming that the city had something to do with it, because it would have had to have been approved to be a part of the park. Does, does anybody know?
We had one veteran that was responsible for just the upkeep of the monument. I, I'm not sure if the grounds were included.
Okay.
And I'm not even sure if he's doing it anymore, because I think he is, uh, his age, he's getting up there in age now. So I'm not sure who that is.
I'm not sure either, but what I can do is I can call, you said it was the Community Foundation?
Yes, I was told by a couple people on the Lathrop Village Community Foundation a couple of years ago, that that was, that they were responsible for that.
Okay, I'll find out.
And so, but obviously, nothing's been done.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll find out about that, right?
We'll find out.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else? Hey, um, we have one public hearing. Do I have to close the, I don't have to close the, I'm thinking of the ZBA, about closing and opening again.
The public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to open it.
But not, we have to close down the, um, city council?
Oh, no, no.
Okay, so, we're gonna skip down to the public hearing for the CIP discussion. So we're opening the public hearing for the, the capital improvement plan. This is where anyone can speak to it. Anyone can.
Are we supposed to...
I wasn't looking at you.
No, are we supposed to shut it down and then reopen? I know you just asked that, but are we doing that?
No, I just opened the public.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Madam Mayor, you may wish to entertain a motion to postpone it until July 26th so it can coincide with the public hearing for, from the planning commission?
I make a motion to...
June 26th, yes.
I make a motion to delegate it to the planning commission on, which date is that?
June 26th.
June 26th?
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
And what's the reason for that?
The planning commission has also noticed a public hearing for this, uh, same CIP plan. So, uh, in order to effectively, uh, conduct both public hearings, this one was noticed for this evening, requesting that council, through the motion that was just made, continue this public hearing to the date certain of June 26th, and that the, that continuation hearing is going to be held and conducted by the planning commission. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in fa, do I have to, oh, yeah, I guess we do. All in favor for, um, delegating it over to the planning commission on Tuesday, June 26th? Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. So I will close the public hearing.
To be continued.
I will continue the public hearing, to, over to Tuesday, June 26th. And now we'll go into our action items. First one is to approve or to ex... To motion accept the bid in award contract to Hutch paving for the 2018 pavement repair program. City administrator, would you like to...
Yes, if you recall, during the, um, budget deliberations, the council did approve the 2018 19th Street project. That was for the Rackham Triangle and the, um, the two sections of Roseland. And your engineer, Scott Ringler, is here today from, um, Giffords, Westchester. And they did put out an RFP, and we received three bids. Hutch paving for $307,708, pro-line paving for $313,940, and Ajax paving industries for $366,205. Scott did, um, contact the references relative to Hutch Paving, who was the lowest bid. And he, as well as myself, are recommending that the award go to Hutch Paving in the amount of the three hundred thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars.
Thank you. Who would like to make the motion?
Mr. Wrangler's here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Who would like to make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the bid to award the contract to Hutch Paving for, uh, three hundred thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
Have they done, have they done work in the city before?
No, they haven't.
Not to.
Not for the city's projects.
Yeah.
Not to exceed.
I'm sorry, not to exceed three hundred thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. Do you have a firm date when they will start?
Uh, we're looking at the end of July for a start with a substantial completion, end of August. Restoration starting in September.
On which street?
Of four, four sections, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we'll hear the motion, or make a motion to approve the additional budget amendments for the two thousand seventeen eighteen budget year. Thank you. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, what you have before you are the recommended budget amendments for the current budget year that ends June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Um, what it does reflect is that the total general fund revenues, um, came in slightly higher at forty-seven thousand, four hundred and seven dollars. Um, the total for all operating funds in terms of revenues were, um, down one hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Then in regards to expenditures, general fund rev, general fund expenditures were actually down, uh, below anticipated by fifty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. And the total for all funds, um, was under by one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars. And the details are reflected in your packet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who would like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the additional budget amendments for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen budget year. For the, for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen budget year.
Well, second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next one will be the motion to accept an engagement letter for professional services agreement with Plant Moran.
Mayor and Council, what you have before you is the agreement with Plant Moran for the auditing services for the current budget year in the amount of thirty-nine thousand. And I think that's basically it.
Okay.
They will be starting, well, they've already had our initial meeting, so they will be starting the actual work.
Okay.
Soon.
So do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, professional services agreement for audit services from Plant Moran.
Second.
So moved in second, uh, all in, oh, no, is there any discussion? Go ahead.
Well, um, so we have a amount of thirty-nine thousand and did we, uh, I think we talked about this in study session. Did we, um, uh, make any comparisons to their price versus other companies? Had we considered that?
Seeing that I started in April, we didn't, and had to go right into the budget. I really didn't have enough time to start looking at alternatives for auditing services. Um, but we definitely have time to start looking at that for the upcoming year.
Okay. All right. So, once we approve this, then they're off and running with?
For the audit.
With the audit, for the audit.
Yes.
Okay, just like last year. Okay, I don't have any more questions.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, any questions? Um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the motion to approve an ordinance to amend the City of Lathrop Village zoning ordinance article two point zero, definitions to add a definition to section two point two and to amend article four point six to update the standards for wireless communications facilities.
I can, uh, talk about this one a little bit. This is, this comes to you from the planning commission. This ordinance, uh, zoning ordinance amendment specifically deals with the tele, wireless telecommunications facilities. Uh, this amendment is, is to keep our ordinance consistent with changes at the federal level, dealing primarily with the timing for, um, how long the city has to review and respond to an application for a co-location upgrade. It also does amend the amount of fees that the city can charge, so it bumps that up a little bit. But there, uh, the ordinance is primarily just to remain compliant with, uh, federal, uh, changes made at the federal level.
Okay.
I will make a mo, a motion to approve the wireless communications, uh, ordinance change.
Second.
So moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the motion to approve an ordinance to amend the City of Lathrop Village zoning ordinance section seven point nine point six to remove provisions relating to zoning amendments to be consistent with state law. City Attorney?
Uh, talk about this one as well. This also comes to you from the planning commission. This zoning ordinance amendment, uh, it was discovered that section seven point nine point six, which provides, uh, the right of referendum is not Winkle for a city. Uh, the right of referendum is only available to residents of a village and township. Uh, residents of a city do not qualify and therefore should not be part of our zoning ordinance. So this amendment will remove that, again, to be consistent with state law.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to remove the right of referendum to section seven point nine six of our zoning.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next will be first reading of an ordinance to amend chapter fifty, peddlers, solicitors, and canvassers.
Uh, this ordinance is coming to you from me. Uh, this is in response to last month, we had an individual that had applied for a solicitor's license. Uh, and there was some confusion on both his part in applying and the city's part on approving and or denying that application that prompted the request for some updates and changes to, to our current ordinance. So, uh, what you have before you are what I believe and hope is the summary of the, the information that was conveyed to me on the types of changes you'd like to see. So it clarifies for the applicant, the information that needs to be provided. It clarifies for the city clerk, the information that, uh, they are to review in, in considering the application. It also allows for the police department to, uh, conduct, uh, I know you can't access a lean search for this, but they, they can utilize some of the services that are available to them for, um, confirming or denying whether or not the applicant has been, made, uh, has made a truthful application. Uh, there was one, we did discuss this during study sessions. There, there is one addition that I will be making to this and you'll see that come back in the second reading. And that addition will, will deal with, um, if, if an individual who applies for a permit is denied, uh, there will be a thirty-day waiting period for, or denied or revoked. There will be a thirty-day waiting period before they can reapply for that permit again. So if, if, uh, there's any questions on this, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I'd be asking the council to, uh, schedule this for a second reading next month.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the first reading of an ordinance to amend chapter fifty, peddlers, solicitors, and canvassers.
Second.
It's moved in second, is there any discussion?
And schedule it for a second reading?
Yeah.
Did I hear that?
Yeah. No, for, well, the question I, I was gonna ask is, um.
You want him to change the motion?
Do you want to change the motion?
You want to add to?
No, I did, uh, yes, uh, I would like, I did not hear him say, and so I'm asking for clarification. Did you say, "and schedule it for a second reading"?
And schedule it for a second reading, but that was gonna be my question. When is, when do you want to schedule the second reading?
Uh, would be in the next regular meeting.
Okay.
July twenty-third.
July, okay. Oh, it's right in front of me.
Any other discussion?
No, that's it.
Did you already say?
I just said.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we will have the first reading of an ordinance to amend chapter seventy-eight, utilities amending article. Hmm, I've never been good with Roman, Roman numeral numerals, that's six?
Four.
Four.
Four, see?
IV.
Hey. I was gonna say something, it would be not nice. But anyway, sewage disposal system, division one, generally section seventy-eight dash three two eight B, grease interceptors violations and penalties.
This ordinance, uh, this also comes from me. Uh, this is, um, again, based upon conversations that council had last month, dealing specifically with the sewage disposal grease interceptor ordinance that we currently have and a request to amend the penalty for violation of that ordinance. So this, this amendment would double the fine. Uh, it's, right now, it's currently two fifty for the first violation, five hundred for a second, second and subsequent violations. Uh, this amendment would make it a five hundred dollar fine for the first offense and a thousand dollars for any subsequent offense.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend chapter seventy-eight, utilities amending article four, sewer disposal systems, division one, generally section seven, seventy-eight dash three twenty-eight B, grease interceptors violations and penalties, and set July twenty-third, twenty eighteen for the second reading and adoption.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the appointment of election commission member.
Madam Clerk?
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have an election scheduled for August seventh, twenty eighteen, at the state primary. And before each election, the election commission, which consists of the city attorney, one of city council members, and myself, will meet directly after this meeting to discuss, um, precinct inspectors, the ballots, what's on the ballots, everything as it relates to the next election. And I'm coming before you today, asking for one of you to be appointed to that commission.
Can I make, make a motion for myself? I, I've moved to, uh, appoint versus candid as a city council member to the election commission for the August seventh, two thousand and eighteen primary election.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we have the appointment of Cheryl Mitchell as alternate for SEMCOG General Assembly. And this is where we have a representative for SEMCOG. Um, currently, Councilwoman Stallings is the delegate. And, well, obviously Cheryl will be the alternate to go to the SEMCOG General Assembly meetings, which meet three times per year.
So I'll make a motion to, um, appoint Dr. Mitchell as alternate for SEMCOG General Assembly.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, or appointment carries. City manager, city administrator, let me start reading correctly. Your report.
Thank you. Well, there's been a lot going on and we've started having monthly staff meetings and they've been very productive. Um, the last one we had was, um, June twelfth. And during that time, we closed the offices down for the one hour so that everyone can attend. We have also, um, started the process of doing the staff, staff evaluations. The self-evaluations are due the end of this week. And then the next step will be performance evaluations for all of the, um, administrative staff. We also have established a park regulations work group to look over some of the, um, issues relative to the rental policies as well as, um, consistent signage for the parks. And one of the things that we're encountering is that if there is an event, um, in the pavilion area, at the same time that we're having, um, people who have reserved the community room, there is a, um, an overflow relative to the use of the facilities in the building. So we, we want to try to put something in place that seems to make sense but tries to accommodate the needs of as many residents as possible. So we're looking at all of those, working, um, both with recreation, the police department, as well as our attorney, um, to try to put some of those considerations into, um, policy.
And that's gonna be residents only to use the pavilion?
That would be preference. We want to start an actual, um, reservation process.
Okay.
Right now, it's the first come, first served.
Okay.
So we would like to start actually getting reservations with a nominal, um, fee associated with that so that we can have some accountability and know who to contact.
Okay.
The, um, cross connection inspections, which are required, will be underway, um, July second and third.
That's, that's just the, the connection of each of the businesses to the water line? Is that the cross connection?
They've identified specific locations. Um, there, so we have a list of those, um, locations that, but yes, where the, I think it's where the water, the, and the sewer line cross connect. Um, as you know, we had the bid opening for the street improvement project, which you just approved. I did have the meeting, as I mentioned in the study session, with Randy Baldwin relative to the Lathrop Services so we can work on spelling out with, um, more specificity the scope of services so that we can all be on the same page going forward. Um, I was also able to attend the Women's Officials Network Breakfast on June eighth, um, which is a, a great group of women in leadership roles throughout the county. And, um, Colette McDonald Newton had invited, um, me to join with Lathrop Village residents to attend a Tiger baseball game, so that was a lot of fun. And some people learned some things about me they didn't know because there was a question and answer session included in it. So it was fun, one of which I have danced on stage with James Brown. I didn't even disclose that one. So just some fun facts. Um, in terms of the boards and commissions, the Historic Advisory Commission did have a meeting. And looking at the, um, the ordinance relative to the commission, it was identified in consultation with our attorney that they actually should have seven appointees. So we are, um, in the process of posting for, um, soliciting, um, applicants for the two available positions on the Historic Advisory Commission. The planning commission, um, their upcoming meeting is going to be on.
To the DDA?
I'm sorry, yeah, that was a mistake. The DDA had their strategic planning, um, meeting today. And that will be a continued conversation as they identify the specific goals that each of the committees should be, um, focusing in on. Um, SACRA had their meeting on June thirteenth in Ferndale at the library. They approved their budget. Um, there weren't any changes relative to the numbers that we had received previously and were included in our budget. Um, they do have new hours for the drop-off recycling center, which are Monday through Friday, nine AM to four PM, and Saturday, seven AM to one PM. And they're evaluating relocating that drop-off center or constructing an additional center at another location because it is becoming quite popular. Um, SACRA, which is the regional authority for water, um, also adopted their budget. And those pricing also did not change. Um, the management from the Great Lakes Water Authority and the Detroit Water Sewer Department had, um, are closer to a common understanding and expectation. So they're working towards that final agreement and that's expected, um, by the end of this month. And there's lots of upcoming events. There was a ribbon cutting on Wednesday for the Tim Miller, um, State Farm on Southfield Road. That's at eleven o'clock. The, um, farmer's market is continuing to grow. That will be this Wednesday from three thirty to seven, followed by the first of the summer concert series, um, from seven to eight thirty. It'll be Larry Lee and Back in the Day Band, who I understand are extraordinarily, um, good and quite popular. So I'm looking forward to my first concert. The Alliance of Rouge Communities, also called ARC, will be holding their meeting here at, um, the community room on the Wednesday at one PM. The SEMCOG General Assembly. The SEMCAG General Assembly, their next meeting is going to be June twenty-eighth at the Little Caesars Arena. The Food Truck Fridays will be beginning in July, July twentieth, six to nine. Community policing event was changed, their new date is going to be July twenty-fifth at six PM. The Six Annual Summer Stroll is scheduled for Sunday, August nineteenth. The Detroit Institute of Arts has a inside-out program where they bring art replicas to be available for people to see throughout the city. And that begins August first through October thirty-first. I already did the summer stroll. And the sixty-fifth birthday, we're starting those planning stages. The weekend date has been identified as September eighth and ninth, and we look forward to everyone participating and offering ideas and suggestions so we can make it a very robust celebration of our sixty-five years. And the election primary, again, is August seventh.
Thank you. Now, these are all the events that will be on the website and on our Facebook.
Most of them are already there.
On the official Lathar Village Facebook page, right?
Yes.
Okay. Next, the reports from boards, commissions, and committees. First one up is SEMCAG, but I don't think you've gone to a meeting yet, right?
No, but as you mentioned, their next one is going to be coming up, so.
Okay, so the next one will be for Southfield Public Schools. For you.
For me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I attended a Southfield Board of Education meeting on June twelfth and they were actually going through their budget for approval. And I extended an invitation for the board to join us as a, you know, have a joint meeting with them, so that we can partner going forward, because I think it's over three years that we've actually had a meeting with them. It's, I said four, because I believe it's about four, but we have not had a meeting with them since that time and they kind of said, well, it may have been three. I said, okay, I'll give you the benefit of the doubt, but we want to extend the invitation so we can partner, we believe in what the public schools are doing, and I think we need to support each other going forward, since we all fall under Southfield Public Schools. They said they would, they took my information and they would contact our new city manager and, and/or our mayor. So we hope in the near future, we will hear from them and then we'll have our meeting sometime in July or August. I'm not sure if you're hearing from them.
Not yet.
Okay.
I have heard from them.
Oh, you have?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that a positive response, or?
Yeah, it was, it was, it was, it was positive.
Okay, that's good.
We'll have to figure out a date, because July, I think, or, or you mean, it would be a separate, never mind. So it would be a separate, wouldn't be
It would be like a study session or something, or?
Not them coming to our meeting, it would be a, like we did, and actually I do believe it was in the last two to three years, because that's like what we did when we went over to the Board of Education.
Yeah.
And had a meeting over there, so we'll have to, well, have to coordinate it.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
Can you tell me who called, or was it just, just saying, we acknowledge that a council person showed up and we're looking at dates?
The board president
Oh, okay.
spoke to me.
Okay.
And verified that you were able to make that type of request.
Okay.
I'm trying to stay.
I don't know how I could read through that one, but, but
I assumed that you introduced yourself as a councilperson, so that's why I wasn't really sure why you're, they were asking me, were you allowed to make that request?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I told them, I said, I'm representing the council of Lathar Village, because we appointed me to extend an olive branch to invite them to a joint meeting. I don't think, I think I was very clear.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, yeah, she came, she did ask me about it and I told her it was a good idea.
Doing their due diligence.
Okay, no problem. I, I don't think I just kind of woke up in the evening and said, I'm gonna go to this meeting.
You're kind of unsavory.
Okay. Wow.
Well, thank you, and we'll have to follow up somehow, somewhere, because they still haven't told us that we have a new superintendent. I just have hearing about it through the, the grapevine. So just to let you know, Derek Lopez, who did the actual wonderful job of doing the presentation for the village, did not get the job. So there is someone else that we don't know the name of, we just know that he did not get the job.
Right, and let me add, Mr. Lopez was at the meeting and I told, I gave him appreciations for coming to Lathar, explaining the village, you know, taking questions, no matter how hard they were, and giving us the right answers. We had a really good turnout, according to our clerk, and the numbers spoke for themselves. People were comfortable with voting yes, and I don't know if that was good or bad, that he was, he was happy that I said that, but I don't know if the board was, you know, I couldn't read that, so.
Well, thank you, appreciate it. Downtown Development Authority.
You have in your packet the, the notes from the Promotions Committee meeting on June eleventh. Probably most noteworthy is that Recreation Director Molly Tamsen will be chairing that committee going forward, so some of the things we were talking about in terms of the sixty-fifth birthday celebration, she will be the coordinator for that.
That's great. Thank you. Planning Commission.
At our last meeting, we approved the ordinances that we had first readings of today. We talked a little bit about the capital improvement plan and ways that we might improve the process for the next time that we do that, including starting a little bit earlier so that the Planning Commission has a little bit more time to get involved. And then also, the Planning Commission was hoping next time to have more involvement with the department heads as they're going through determining what their needs are, so they can have a little bit more interaction there. We also talked about the master plan, which is required to be reviewed every five years. It's not up, it's not due to be reviewed for another year, but there was a feeling on the Planning Commission that maybe we ought to start taking a look at it this year instead of waiting until next year. And then there was also a suggestion that we have a joint Planning Commission-City Council meeting in order to discuss how we actually move the master plan forward, as opposed to just developing the master plan and then waiting for something to happen.
All right. Thank you. Historic Advisory Commission.
I don't have the official copy of the minutes from that meeting, but they did meet and have their election of officers, so that information will be coming shortly.
Okay, thank you.
And are we gonna post, I assume we're gonna post on the website for the two open positions there?
Is there any unfinished business that we need to take care of?
No, just an observation. So over the last couple of years, for Parks and Rec, we always had a committee slash group that would meet under Parks and Rec, where it, it was either a voluntary group or it was a group that kind of got together and discussed items relating to Parks and Rec. I don't know what that group is looking like over the last couple of months here. I don't know who's a part of that group now, so I spoke to Molly last week and she doesn't know either, so I need to probably try to fish out a roster that, you know, they've had some old meetings and figure out who was actually on that committee. I don't think it's a committee, I think it was a group. So if, can I, I probably can meet with you. Okay, because I, I don't know who's on the group or, or committee, so, yeah. We'd like to reactivate that.
Okay.
Because we got a lot of activities coming up and I don't know what our volunteer numbers look like this year.
Okay.
Yep, that's it.
Yes.
I just realized I didn't provide the update on the dumpster at Sunny Brook in Cambridge.
I told, oh, yeah.
And I've been working with the code enforcement and he has been monitoring that on a regular basis and to the best of his observations, there, the problem has not reoccurred.
Good, glad to hear it.
He, he did indicate to me that the property owner has gone to two times a week picking up the trash, so he's, like Cheryl said, optimistic that that'll help resolve the issue.
Okay, good. Also for, oh, go ahead, you can go first.
All right, I was just gonna say, on Sunday, June third, we had our cleanup the corridor, which went very well, but again, we had a low resident turnout, but I want to thank the residents that did turn out, Mary Moi, who was on the, had a, a big picture in the CNG of her picking up something or other. Dorothy Wright, who showed up, and then also Marcus Redd, and also thank Marcus for, once again, getting his church group involved, which provided the majority of the labor like they have in the last, last few years. So I just want to thank all of them and thank all the residents that came out.
Okay, thank you. So just to finish up, June twenty-third, which will be this Saturday, is a citywide garage sale. You can get your garage sale signs for free, you get two or one. Get two of them. So it's time to do some organizing, it'll be great to do it this weekend. Also, the council has been discussing adding another meeting date, so we can have thorough discussions on things, specific things that have kind of been hanging out there. So the first one, of course, is gonna be the property of houses in the woods and that is going to be on July eleventh.
Eleventh.
So we can start getting that ball rolling, see what we're gonna do with that. Then, the last thing, which I did put it out there, it is, you know, as a resident, not as elected, but to be careful with the deer, because, well, one, I said the deer was stalking me, but it was, it came really, really close and then it, it killed my neighbor's dog because her dog, I was assuming the dog must have came after the deer and it killed it. So just to be careful with little animals. My dogs are unfazed by the deer, but, so that's all that I have. Anything else for the good of the cause? I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I don't have to ask if everybody's in favor, right?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Have a good night, thank you.